Call to order, Meniala City Council. If there are eyes for a moment of silence and Vice Mayor, feel the use in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Mayor?
Looks good, sir, thank you.
Cast one before him.
Looks good, thank you.
Cast one Hernandez, looks good. Job.
No changes.
Scott. Good. Christine. Good. Okay. Public comment, if there's any way that the audience would like to speak at this time on anything that's not on the agenda, please come forth. You scooted up here pretty quick.
I had to show off in front of you. I heard that's what you gotta do with Georgia Bulldogs.
Hey. We're in the big game. Not sure how we're gonna do, but we're there.
For the record, my name is Wally Swarco, 802 South Main Avenue. I'm here for just two reasons. A number of the residents in old Meniala had just, and I address you, Mayor Kelly, just to mention, not a request, just to mention, they had asked me, do you think our mayor would contact the mayor of Claremont, asking if we could join in with the, I think it's a sixth, they changed and elevated the cost of boat ramps for the boats. And I guess there's an annual pass of thirty dollars a year. All I could do is mention it. Again, we're not, they're not requesting you to do anything, they just wanted to place a thought in your mind.
We'll reach out, we'll see him. I know, I'll see socially over the next week, I'll bring it up to Mayor Murray.
My main reason for being here is to recognize Mark Johnson. Most of you were here, although Eric, I don't think you were, when Meniala had a tragedy of a fire and one of the boys had perished. You all remember that. Well, we had something similar to that, where we were contacted back home out of state. And the family, the spouse, had suffered a very serious brain aneurysm at four in the morning. Our local paramedic saved her life and transported her to Gainesville. She's on the mend, she's better, she's got to work on her whole left side, she's got about maybe seventy-five to eighty percent of her memory retention. But the whole family is suffering badly. She's in her mid-fifties, and they had rented a home for twenty-two consecutive years at the same home. And because of illness, so on, I don't know the whole story, they were asked to leave because they couldn't make the rent. They tried, said, well, can you take X number of dollars until we can catch up? They didn't do it. So almost all of the things, the cable, and so many of the other bills were in the spouse's name, in her name. And what the, it happened to me with Michelle and I, trying to pay a cable bill, they wouldn't, they wouldn't talk to me because it's in her name. Well, he called me and Michelle, very emotional, broken down. I don't know what to do, I have to turn my water off, I don't know, I don't know how to handle this, et cetera, et cetera. So I called Mark. And Mark responded back to me immediately because of, under the circumstances, although he always responds immediately. And Mark tried calling him, I remember it vividly, seven o'clock at night, eight o'clock at night, nine o'clock at night, but he didn't answer because he thought they were praying calls. So I contacted the family and said, there's a number here, city manager Mark Johnson, pick up. They did. Whatever Mark did, he was able to calm the fella down and basically said, I'll take care All in all, I wanted to recognize him for that, and I want to use a little analogy. For those of us that are in sports, we will see coaches, whether it's Saban with Alabama, sorry, I don't know the name of your coach at Georgia.
Be Mr. Smart, but anything's flexible in the SEC, it could change tomorrow.
And Joe with Belichick with the Patriots. Every coach has a style. And as of our opinion, we're so blessed to have Mark, all the things he does behind the scenes that we're not aware of. And so we wanted to recognize him for what he did. It was nowhere near the tragedy with the fatality with the house that caught on fire, but he applied the same calmness and willingness to help that family in very serious distress. And so I, I just wanted to address the council and let them know, every coach, every person, all five of you up there, including myself, we have our own style. Maybe it isn't accepted by all, but when you're effective and you're getting things done, which I think he is, and I think, I think he's our second city manager. Maybe there was a third, I can't remember offhand. But I think we've been so blessed and he has his own way, his own style, but he gets the job done. So with that, thank you for helping that, that family. They call us about every three, four days with a progress report. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I do keep tabs on you with the, watching it on the South Lake Press with the decisions that you make.
Thanks. Okay. Anyone else?
Waiting on your theme music. You should have theme music, we could play it when you come up every week, every other week.
Mark, are we on budget cuts with the water bottles today?
Yeah. He found a deal.
Cost reductions.
They were half price. Okay.
Farmer Banks, Helfrich, Clay Road District, South Lake County, farm tip of the day, now's the time to put lettuce in the ground. Three things about lettuce. One is, as it's growing, you can clip the leaves, use them in salads, sandwiches, however, and they will actually give you three harvests. The other thing is, every month, you'll have another head or leaves of lettuce, so that's one of the great things about lettuce. Mayor, council, distinguished guests, where has compassion gone in our constitutional republic, representative democracy? We are divided and entrenched society. We are pitted against each other. We have ideologies on either side, and we have to choose on either side. Our brothers, our sisters, our mothers, our fathers, our husbands, our wives are pitted against each other, and it's to the point where we don't talk to each other anymore. In fact, many of us die alone on our deathbeds because we forget to speak. Our enemies delight in this because we are fighting each other, we are imploding ourselves, and they sit back and look at us and think they're not fighting against them. This is unsustainable, and as a farmer, a sustainable farmer, I know a little bit about sustainability, and this is unsustainable. So what can we do about it? First and foremost, we need a unifier, someone who will stop yelling and screaming and will listen and hear. And this unifier is not a celebrity, it's not an actor, it's not a politician, it's not a policymaker. This unifier is the person you see when you look in the mirror. So the next time you look in the mirror, remember, America needs you, Uncle Sam wants you, and you might just see some compassion in that. I am Farmer Banks Helfrich, may you all be blessed, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Banks, if next week you can, or next meeting, you can let me know how to get rid of a mulled gopher in my backyard, that'd be great. Thank you.
K and T Alexander, 872 Meadow Park Drive in Meniala, and I'm just coming up here today to say how excited we are for the Meniala Christmas Parade. For, it's eight years, right, that you guys have had it? And out of those eight years, we have participated for three years, and so we're very excited that the special needs community will be part of the celebration again. So please look for our families, and I know, hopefully, we will have a polar bear with us, AKA Zeus. We're gonna put a red scarf on him, so if you've ever seen Zeus, you know what I'm talking about, so he should be a hit with us as we're walking with a lot of our clients, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That said, bring it back. Do you want to do project updates, or you wanna pass on?
No, the only project update I asked Mark, and we have a pretty lengthy agenda, so we'll table it, would be the parks agreement with.
I had reached out, I had reached out to Mark a couple of times, and he said he hadn't received it.
We have, yeah, have we received it yet?
I got an email from them just today. As far as I know, we haven't received a hard copy yet.
No?
Okay. If you can follow up on that.
Yeah, I'll follow.
Because I've reached out a couple of times, I was kind of on hold.
Okay.
Okay. So moving on. Mayor's consent agenda. Any questions, concerns, gonna get a motion? Anybody in the audience want to speak on the consent agenda?
I just wanted to say, what a great job, Mark and your team for doing that grant for the firefighter. That is, they came through decontamination equipment, that's expensive, and what a great job in getting that grant.
With that said, can I get a motion to approve?
And I'll second.
Okay, got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, site plan for item six.
Quasi judicial thing, so I'll go ahead and swear in everybody, as Eric's getting ready. If there's anybody that may wish to speak on this item, if you could please raise your right hand.
This is just for this item, right?
Yeah, this is just for this item, we'll do a separate one.
Thank you, I want to clarify.
For the Sardo bus and coach upholstery site plan. Do you swear or affirm that a testimony you give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you all.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. For the record, Eric Roche with Inspire here, in my role as a contract planner to the city. This is item number six on your agenda, which is the Sardo bus and coach upholstery site plan. I'll run through the location of the project, speak about the request, run through the outstanding comments, and then I'll summarize the planning and zoning commission recommendations. This one's on the east side of 27, it's just south of Citrus Grove Road, it's just under five acres in size, currently an undeveloped property. We're here this evening for a site plan request. It's a warehouse, office, and dead storage building, as you can see, referenced on the screen, the stormwater ponds can be on the east side of the site, buffering from adjacent uses, access comes through an access easement, cross-access from the property to the south. And you're likely familiar with this, it did come through, I believe, last year for a development agreement to allow for this use and this square footage associated with the property. Here are the elevations of the property, they are consistent with the city's architectural requirements. You can see that there are some bays for some trucks on the back. So we did issue a comment letter, I believe that was provided in your backup. They requested traffic study exemption, and that was approved, so that was reviewed by our traffic subconsultant for consistency with exemption requirements. They are going to be required to do Water Star certification through the Water Management District, that's gonna be downstream in the process, so nothing really needs to happen with that this evening. They're gonna need to submit clearing and tree removal permits. They've got a cross-access easement and a twenty-foot utility easement along US 27 that they're gonna be required to do. I believe that easement's in draft form, but hasn't been recorded, so we're gonna need to see that recorded before they can break ground. And then there were some informational comments from fire that don't require any additional revisions to the plan. So this did go to P and Z on November 3rd. Their recommendation was for approval, subject to the staff recommendations, verifying any pending stormwater permits, adding clear maintenance plan for the retention pond, confirming off-site drainage won't increase flow toward off-site homes, and ensuring landscape and lighting meets city environmental standards. And I'll just say, from items two, three, and four, those are all gonna be covered under their Water Management District permit for drainage, and then, you know, our review ensured that they're consistent with landscaping and lighting, consistent with city standards. So they should be consistent with, with all of these requirements from P and Z as presented. So with that, our recommendations for approval, subject to conditions, I'll stand for any questions, and the applicant and the engineer are here for any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Anybody in the audience want to speak on this? About, Joe, you got any concerns?
Nope.
Eric?
Nope, good.
And with that said, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
You got a second?
I'll second.
Got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Welcome to Meniala.
Welcome.
Okay, Shepherd's Landing, we have three, how do you want to handle these, Scott? Can talk them all and go separately, or how do you want to?
Yes, that's up to you all, what we typically do is discuss them together at one time. There aren't any votes this evening except for the transmittal of the comp plan, so you don't need to vote on any of those, but we'll go ahead, I can go ahead and read ordinance 2025-14 on first reading. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Meniala, Florida, mending the boundaries of the City of Meniala. In accordance to the procedure set forth in section 171.044 Florida statutes, conclude within the city limits approximately 191.14 acres of property generally located north and south of Sullivan Road and east and west of Scrub J Lane in Lake County, Florida, rezoning the annexed property from Lake County Planned Urban Development to P, City of Meniala Planned Unit Development, PUD, rezoning the property currently in the City of Meniala from Business District B1 and Planned Unit Development to Planned Unit Development, PUD, providing for conditions and contingencies, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Item eight, which is ordinance 2025-13 on first reading, in accordance to the City Council of the City of Meniala, Florida, providing for comprehensive plan amendment, amending the land use designation from rural and the Lake County Comprehensive Plan and Commercial and Harb Meniala Ridge Mixed Use Residential Development on the City of Meniala Future Land Use Map to Mixed Use Development on the Future Land Use Map of the City of Meniala's Comprehensive Plan for 259.2907 acres, a property generally located north and south of Sullivan Road and east and west of Scrub J Lane. Amending the future land use element of City of Meniala to add a new future land use designation of Shepherd's Landing Mixed Use Residential Development, providing for additions and contingencies, directing the city clerk to transmit the amendment to the appropriate governmental agencies pursuant to chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. As I said at the beginning, this is the first reading of the annexation and conditional rezoning, it is the first reading and transmittal hearing for the comp plan amendment, and it is the first public hearing of two for the development agreement. So with that, I'll go ahead and swear in anybody who may wish to speak on the Shepherd's Landing. Yes. There you go. Didn't have to stand, but that's a nice touch. Do you swear or affirm that a testimony you give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you all.
Can you elaborate on item eight, just the transmittal, exactly what that means, if you don't mind?
Yes.
Just for the people here.
Yes, the Florida statute requires for large-scale comp plan amendments that you transmit, which means we literally send the development up to the state to be sent around to a variety of state reviewing agencies. They review it and make comments, or choose not to make comments, send those back to the city, there's a sixty-day lag, and then after that, it comes back to you for consideration of any comments they did make, and we then have the, an adoption hearing at that time.
So just to clarify, this is just to send it up there to get looked at?
This is to send it up, does not approve it.
This is not that, if we do not, if we transmit tonight, that doesn't, that does not mean that we are changing our comp plan, it's just allowing, I just want to clarify that, that for everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, again, for the record, Eric Roche with Inspire here is the contract planner to the city. I appreciate the ability to present all three of these in one presentation because they're all tied together. So items seven, eight, and nine are the Shepherd's Landing Annexation, PUD rezoning, comp plan amendments, and development agreement. I'll speak about the location, talk through the current future land use and the current zoning on the property, I'll step through each of the requests, one by one, we'll get into the outstanding issues, and then finally, I'll summarize the P and Z discussion, both from last month and from this month on these cases, and talk through the next steps. So this one's south of the turnpike, north of Citrus Grove Road, it's bisected by Sullivan Road and Scrub J Lane, and it's plus or minus 261 acres in size. A portion of the property is already in the city, a portion is proposed for annexation into the city. It's got an existing future land use of Lake County Rural for about 194 acres, you can see the property outlined in yellow on the west side of Scrub J. In city general commercial on the east side of Scrub J, you can see the red property there, which is also included in the application currently in the city. And then there's a small triangular piece on the north side adjacent to the turnpike that was included in the original Meniala Ridge, but it was not included in the updated Meniala Ridge, so it still retains that mixed-use residential designation. The current zoning of the property, there's an old Lake County PD on the 194 acres west of Scrub J, and then there's C1, or excuse me, B1 city designation, which allows for general commercial uses on the 59 acres that are currently in the city, and then the old remnant portion of Meniala Ridge, which was left behind by last year's application to amend Meniala Ridge. So their request is to pull the 194 acres from Lake County into the city, and then they have requested a comp plan text amendment and future land use map amendment to do a new designation called Mixed Use Residential Development Shepherd's Landing, which will have its own development program adopted in the comp plan. They've requested PUD rezoning for the whole property, this is generally the map that they're seeking to entitle the property with. There's a ten-acre public utility tract that you can see on the, closer to the northwest portion of the property. The lighter yellow is intended to be detached, single-family units, the orange would be townhomes closer to Sullivan and Scrub J, and then there's a small commercial parcel at the hard corner on the southeast portion of the site of Scrub J and Sullivan. They've also proposed a development agreement, which really ties everything together with all the terms for the development, memorializes all of that, all the entitlements for the property. The development program would be 652 single-family detached units, again, those would be in the lighter colored orange areas, 443 single-family attached units in the darker orange, just over 47,000 square feet of commercial in the red area, the 10 acres of public utilities, and then they've got an open space tract in green area, 25 acres really on the northwest side of the property. So for the annexation, the four parcels here are outlined, had no additional, you know, comments on the annexation, it's been reviewed by staff, I believe it's also gone to the county for a review, they're looking at it right now. For the planned unit development rezoning on item number seven, it is an increase in the residential development program, but it's a pretty big decrease in commercial, because when you multiply out the floor area ratio allowed within the commercial section of the project, and you convert that out to trips, it results in a huge decrease in entitlements associated with that property. So they are proposing a gross density of about 4.2 dwelling units per acre, they would like a cluster density to go up to 10 dwelling units per acre in certain areas, so how that will work is you have, you know, less density in the single-family area, you'd be able to cluster up to 10, so you could get those townhomes closer to the intersection of Scrub J and Sullivan. They've originally requested a 40-foot minimum single-family lot width and a 14-foot minimum townhome lot width. I believe some of those development standards have changed based on our comments. They did recently resubmit a development agreement last week to address some of the comments you're gonna hear from me and the outstanding issues, and that's something we'll work with them through the process, you know, before we come back for second reading, hopefully that list of outstanding comments gets a lot shorter. In terms of the comp plan amendment, you can see what the proposed map would look like, so you'd have the new mixed-use residential development Shepherd's Landing, so if you go to the city's future land use map, you would see that, and you would know, this has got its own policies in the comp plan, and similar to what we did for Meniala Ridge, you would have a text amendment here, which sets the maximum for each of those uses directly in the comp plan. So they couldn't come back and do more units than was otherwise contemplated at the adoption hearing without going back through the comp plan amendment process, and you're requesting approval through the state process, again, as Scott mentioned, how that works. So it's kind of a little bit of a belt and suspenders, you're not just, you know, memorializing the development program in the PUD and the development agreement locally, but you're also putting it into the comp plan, which requires, you know, coordination with the state for, for any changes. The development agreement, again, this just really ties all of those standards together, so we're gonna find all of the bulk standards, the setbacks, maximum building heights, you know, requirements for actual site construction, those types of things are in the development agreement, as well as provision of infrastructure within the community from an ownership and a maintenance standpoint. It's gonna include this conceptual plan as well and some other exhibits to really memorialize any decision that's made by a council. Terms of outstanding issues, the annexation, as I mentioned, we have no outstanding comments, all of the reviewers have signed off on that for the city. The PUD rezoning, we did have 11 comments that we issued back in late October, and the applicant, as I mentioned, just resubmitted last week in an attempt to clear some of those comments, and I saw a sneak peek of their presentation at P and Z last night, I think they've kind of gone one by one showing how they're gonna address these, so I did appreciate that. Interconnections to Founder's Ridge, if you recall, we had that concept plan that was approved for Founder's earlier this year, it showed six interconnect, interconnections to the north, and this property butts up to it, and they're showing two, so we just wanted to make folks aware that there needs to be some coordination between the two private owners to ensure that connectivity is, is agreed upon between the two projects. We had raised a question about buffering between the public tracks and the rural single-family housing to the west. We deferred to utilities for capacity information, I think they have reviewed it, and I have not seen any comments that say they're deficient in terms of capacity, and there are some provisions in the development agreement that require them to do a private package plant at their own expense if so. require them to do a private package plant at their own expense if they come in at such time the capacity's not available. So that's been covered in the agreement. They are proposing front-loaded townhomes, which is inconsistent with the city's current code, which requires rear-loading. They're deviating from the city's open space definition by including some stormwater ponds and things of that nature in the open space, which was also done on Mineola Ridge. They're revising some of the development standards below the minimums for the city and the conventional districts. Their justification is this is a PUD, it's a little bit different. I mentioned the 14-foot townhome. I believe they committed last night at P and Z to increasing that to 20 feet for those townhome lots. So as I mentioned, some of these things may go away as we review the resubmit of the development agreement. And they're proposing a list of by right special exceptions. So typically, we have a little bit more detail when we review a special exception. We're looking at compatibility, we're looking at buffering, we're looking at adjacencies and things like that. So with their proposal for that commercial area, they'd be able to do those special exceptions by right without an additional public hearing. We were still awaiting response from Public Works in Lake County. For the PUD, we also had three outstanding comments from engineering. One was regarding neighborhood parks. They're proposing to not require parking for those facilities. We did clarify that they will be providing parking for those larger recreational amenities, you know, where you're going to have the mail kiosk and the pool and all that stuff. So they will park those, but their proposal is to not allow or not require parking for the smaller pocket parks. There was a concern with some of the on-street parking in the non-residential areas that was brought up by engineering, and then they also wanted to ensure that there was adequate space for underground utilities, and Public Works was okay with that. The last comment on the PUD was from our traffic subconsultant, who just wanted some clarifications on the traffic study, and that's something that I know the applicant's working on getting resubmitted, but that has not been resubmitted this time. Through the process, we talked through some other issues, most notably compatibility and the fact that the city's wastewater treatment plants immediately to the east of the site across Scrub Jay. And of course, that's in design for expansion right now. You know, I think, you know, we were just a little, you know, concerned with potentially the compatibility with the noises and sounds and making sure that the folks who ultimately end up living in this area are not calling the city and complaining that, you know, it's a bad use next to their house because that use was there first and that use will continue to and will be expanded, quite frankly. So we did suggest potentially putting in some sort of non-residential buffer, you know, maybe a 300 to 500-foot tract between the plant and some of the housing. We discussed that with the applicant, and their preference is to just provide additional disclosures in their CC Norris to ensure that folks know that they're buying next to it, and that's just, you know, if anything's associated with the plant, that's their responsibility. The development agreement, 14 outstanding comments from planning. A lot of this is kind of consistent with what we talked about on the PUD, the disclosure language, want to ensure that city attorney is comfortable with that. We wanted to clarify the limits of construction for Scrub Jay and Sullivan, so it's clear what their responsibility is going to be for those projects. They're deviating from the open space definition, same comment as before. They need to provide an exhibit for relief on grading and retaining wall heights, and this was what was done for Mineola Ridge, and I believe the applicant's committed to doing that, just working through some issues to ensure that they had the right exhibit for our review. There was also some language that said if the city doesn't accept the public facility tract, it would automatically revert to 40 units. I don't think anyone objects to having additional units in that location, just want to make sure that's covered in the comp plan amendment and whatever's transmitted to the state, so they evaluate it based on the maximum that it could be allowed. Applicant is proposing the elimination of parking for the neighborhood parks, we talked through that. The deviations from the conventional development standards, we've spoken about that. The clarification on the buffering, and then the responses from some of the outstanding reviewers. Engineering did have three additional comments, all related to grading. So the maximum 50-foot grading limitation's been proposed for 20% of the property, so we want to understand where that is and where that's located. Same with retaining walls, they are proposing 18-foot interior retaining walls, only six feet will be visible from the rights of way. We requested a grading and wall detail to show, you know, how that will look and where they would be located, so that's something we hope to bring back to you on second reading. And then the public facility site, they did have some questions about the dedication of the public facility site. It's kind of bisected from the wastewater plant as it stands today, and there's some slope on the property, so engineering just wanted to make sure that's going to work before we agree to accept it. Then finally, planning and zoning commission, there was two separate meetings on this. The first night was last month. They considered the comp plan amendment and elected to move that forward, and then last night, they considered the annexation, PUD rezoning, and development agreement and elected to move that forward. So there are two separate meetings, so you're going to see a couple of different dates in here. There was a lot of debate, both nights, quite frankly, probably more so last night than in November, but they ultimately ended up recommending approval on the annexation and PUD rezoning last night. They did want to require an additional 25% of the property to be dedicated to the city as conservation. There was a lot of back and forth, well, maybe the public facility site could be used as conservation instead of, you know, for public facility uses, but ultimately, what they ended up recommending was keep the public facility tract where it is, the 10 acres, and then add additional property to be dedicated to the city for conservation. The comp plan amendments, they recommended approval at the previous meeting on November 3rd. There was a good amount of discussion at this meeting as well. Ultimately, they wanted to ensure that a land survey was completed prior to commencement. They wanted to ensure comprehensive stormwater plan is in place. They wanted to address all the staff recommendations from our report and then update the traffic And then finally, on the development agreement, there was a motion last night on that as well, and that requires the applicant to address the staff comments, and then take into consideration some Lake County comments, and we had not seen the Lake County comments or what they were referencing. Apparently, there was a staff report issued sometime yesterday or even a little sooner on the annexation from the county, where they had sent it to their Public Works Department, and there were 24 comments in there, and I didn't have a chance to go through all of them in detail. I did send them to the applicant so they can look at that staff report. But in summary, there were some comments on Sullivan, there were some comments on Scrub Jay, some comments on internal connectivity within the project from vehicular access standpoint, pedestrian standpoint. There was a comment on traffic, which they're working through now. There was a comment on stormwater management and a few on, one on a flood study. So we will review those comments and see if they are applicable to any action that the city's taking, but I certainly defer to the city attorney whether we need to consider the county's comments in this type of action because it's technically within the jurisdiction of the city, so.
The 24 comments will be addressed before the next meeting. We're just, I don't know what they look like, but somebody's going to look at them, applicant will look at them and take a temperature of them, that's fine. Can you go back to a slide? I have a couple of questions before we open up. Of the, just an overview of the map, please. That one's fine. To the west side of that, where it says rural zoning, PUD, I just want to clarify, that is actually the schools, that's actually the school board property, is it not?
Yes.
So a school could go there, so that is not, it just makes it look like there's houses there, and it's not, it's owned by the school board and it's designated for a school. I just wanted to make sure because that creates a huge buffer between those two. Just wanted to make sure on that one. The 10-acre, I struggle with the 10-acre public utility piece, and I will defer to the applicant. I think we're not really sure where it's going to end up, but I think the city should get it if it's not, if it's for conservation or for whatever, but can we change the wording in that and cause 10 acres, it could be for conservation or be for that, something that is a little bit more flexible if something happens, because you got to protest it if something's wrong, there's something on that piece. I know we have, we approved a site plan for Founder's, and they had six connections, there's two on here, but is there somewhere in there that we can actually, we can approve it with two, but have disclosure that they can have up to six, just that it kind of can mirror? So if it comes back to, if they just use two, because that's, for me, that's a discussion between two landowners to decide that out, but if, I don't want to put future councils in a position where it's like, well, he has two and they have six, like, let's just, they can figure it out later, but just as a housekeeping, does that make sense, Scott? Just, they can show two, but I don't, we have a tendency for site plans to come back and say, hey, this is where this amphitheater is supposed to be at, and there's not one, and then we find out that they were going to donate a number written and a pencil on the side of it, and that becomes things, so.
And that's why we brought it up, Mayor. I mean, we don't want the staff to be in the middle of that, and we don't want you to be in the middle of that, so.
No, I just make it.
I think we can do something like that in the agreement to kind of speak to that, and just keep in mind the Founder's Plan, while it was adopted, is a concept plan, so they don't have a PSP or any site construction.
That's fine, I'm just trying to prevent future headache. Does anybody else before we open up a public comment? Thank you for entertaining my thoughts.
Yeah, just some items for the applicant. Part of it said it was on-street parking.
Does the applicant want to come up?
Yeah, I think the applicant should come up.
Do you want to present, or how do you want to do this? How do you want to work it? You want to just listen to them?
I can, we're happy to answer your questions as they come up, or if you'd like to see our presentation, we can do that first, either or.
There's just, it's three items, yes or no?
14 subparts.
Yeah. We'll be here about four hours. For the on-street parking, just to confirm, that's only going to be on one side, or proposing both sides?
No, so traditionally, in all of our developments within the city, we only propose parking on one side, and to conclude the conversation with the city's consultant, those smaller park at neighborhood parks, we are proposing the opportunity to provide on-street parking adjacent to those, which would be outside of the minimum paved right-of-way with per your fire code. So not only would it provide isolated parking for those little neighborhood parks, but it'd also provide relief for everyday use in the neighborhood as we see when people throw birthday parties or things like that and cars tend to stack up, it would provide those additional spaces.
Would it be cutouts or just standard on-street next to the curb?
Cutouts or on-street.
Right, so is it going to be cut out from the street, or are there going to be parking on the actual street itself?
No, it'd be cutouts.
Cutouts, okay. And you and I discussed this in other projects as well, so it'd be for the streets, as we've seen some of the neighborhoods, when two lifts are done prior to the last development being completed, you know, streets do get pretty messed up. We did agree before to have two lifts, one prior and one towards the end of their, at the end of the project, I'm assuming that's...
We're more than happy to accommodate that, that's a good practice.
Okay. And for clarity, the neighborhood parks, are they going to be active or passive? In other words, are they going to have tot lots, you know, is that still up to discussion?
It'll be a mixture, right? So certainly some tot lots and other activities, programmed activities, and then others will be passive.
Okay, great, that's it, thank you.
Before you go, Matt? We did have a, I did discuss with the applicant prior to this, Sullivan Road piece and improvements to Sullivan Road on the wastewater treatment side of it. The applicant has no, he's not connecting to it, so it's kind of hard to say you're not connecting to it, but thinking of the future that we might have to do something, he was discussed giving, how do you, how do we decide? I asked her right away, he said no.
What, no?
But I could ask, but he came up with a good compromise, and so, what was the compromise?
So we've done this with multiple projects in the county, various jurisdictions, and the way it works is we basically, it's pre-dedication almost, right? So up until the city and/or county ever want to utilize it, it's still our land. So number one, what that does is it, you know, relieves the jurisdictional authority of any maintenance obligation associated with that land. It's still our land. However, there's a written agreement that's in place that says, hey, at such a time, you guys decide it's time to come in and actually improve that road or do whatever you're going to do with that road. We have pre-agreed to that set distance for you to go ahead and take, so it removes any eminent domain, it removes any of that condition.
And it will be, if we went and looked, I went and kind of looked at the property, it's a 40-foot road, it's a 50-foot right-of-way, and the point would be, we would, he would get half of it, the other half would come from the adjacent property.
Yes, sir. So there's a 40-foot easement that was dedicated by Mr. Lowndes. We have the OR book and page, your city attorney can certainly review that, but in that easement, it also specifies that it is intended for the use of the public and future right-of-way. So again, not being a lawyer or a licensed surveyor, we're taking that as 40-foot basically of right-of-way, and knowing that the minimum city standard is 50 feet, we would propose five feet on our side of the road for that future dedication if and when it ever becomes necessary, and then, you know, the five feet would come from the other side.
And this is just, my thought process was just to protect the city in the future, but going out there and looking at it, five foot off the road are some really big power poles, so I'm not sure it's ever going to get used, but it would be nice to have, so if whatever happens down there, it's just, it's just there, and I like the idea of future, that way we don't have to go through and maintain it.
Yeah.
So that would be great, too. So do you know how to, did you get that, Scott? Thank you.
Yeah, and we've done those agreements with the county too, so we're happy to enter into a similar agreement with the city.
Have your attorney call our attorney on that one if it works out. Okay, at this point in time, Joe, do you have any comments you want to listen to the audience?
Six-foot walls.
Yes, sir.
At 18-foot.
I understand, and your beautiful city is challenged at times by boundary constraints when it comes to development, and what we have been successful in and other developments have been successful in is aesthetically massaging that by use of larger retaining walls interior to the site that aren't visible to the public right-of-way.
You don't see them, it's okay with us because we won't see them, but walls over six feet tend to be ugly. That's my comment.
Okay, I understand.
Debbie?
I just wanted, for clear transparency, I just want to let everyone know that I did speak to the developer and had some questions.
So Pat did mention Sullivan Road in regards to the improvements on that road, but I also need to just put out there about Scrub Jay Lane as well. Both of those roads need some major improvements on there, and I think as, I mean, like, they should have been done a while ago, so that's one of my concerns that I have, and also making sure that there is a buffering on the west side, most definitely.
Yes, ma'am. So when it comes to the roads, as you know, with Mineola Ridge, we're already responsible for realigning Scrub Jay all the way to the north up to 561. I believe the ribbon cutting for Hancock sidebar real quick is December 19th, so that road will be complete going all the way up to 455. And then we're also doing a parallel collector road that will run from Scrub Jay all the way out to Briar Rose, providing regional relief and transportation connectivity. So quite literally, this project is the missing gap now between your Founder's Ridge and Citrus Grove, right, and to the north. So as a part of this and included in your packet, we have a proposed right-of-way section for Scrub Jay that mirrors the same right-of-way all the way up through Mineola Ridge, I believe with the 12-foot sidewalk trail on one side, sidewalk on the other, full lanes, urban section, tree-lined streets, and the like. So our intent is to have a seamless corridor that provides regional relief, interconnecting basically parallel to Hancock.
But just to clarify, Pam, and I mean, that is for touching his project, the one that's going through, the Founder's Ridge is not, they're not doing anything with that one piece of that one road, that is...
Correct.
And that was, we've had that discussion with the property owner, and he was very adamant that he is, he'll fix his roads, but...
he'll, he'll fix his roads, but he's not fixing others. I just wanted to clarify and put perspective.
And thank you for clarifying that as well.
Perspective on that. The other question I had is, I know prior to you being in your current role, I remember working with the Braves on the original project. And the intersection there was going to be a roundabout at Scrub Jay and Hank, Scrub Jay and Sullivan. What is, what is that plans for that to be now?
So...
I was asking what it is. I know things change.
So what we're proposing is to let the transportation model dictate that intersection. What we are proposing is a roundabout west of that intersection. So where you see that road labeled Lake County School Board Site, or Road, where it goes south into the residential neighborhood. We are proposing a roundabout there, and there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one, it's to, I keep wanting to say divert, but it's to not, uh, I'm missing my words. It's to deter, thank you, sir. It's to deter truck traffic on that road, Sullivan, right? So that roundabout there at the Lake County School Board Road would do that. However, you have truck traffic that's going to be coming from Founders. You have truck traffic that's going to be coming from Mineola Ridge. And so it's important to us that that four-way intersection might very well become, you know, signalized as a mean of functionality for that transportation. So we would ask that the transportation analysis dictate that intersection, and we'll commit to putting a roundabout at the Lake County School Board Road site to deter that traffic on Sullivan.
Okay.
Do you want to bring up very the nine-hundred-pound elephant in the room, that's annexation, right now? Annexation, there's a lot of positives and negatives. And one of the key things I think Mineola's done a great job at is to limit and be smart with their annexations. Given where this project is going, and of course, asking for the annexation, there are some boundaries that have been put in through the PUD. Now, you, given your current role, of course, where you do business all across the county, given that the city does not annex, is it a true, two, two questions, in your opinion, and again, of course, your opinion, are we seeing the county rezone some of their land in order to accommodate for the growth that we're seeing?
Yes.
And the second part of that question, I think this is more of a factual statement. As it stands now, the county does allow for more units within an acre as compared to Mineola. Is that also a factual statement?
I would say that they tend to be more lenient with density than Mineola's code currently allows for.
So it's, it's safe to say that if we were to annex and we approved this, then you'll see, essentially, you're going to be bound by stricter constraints through Mineola than you would through the county?
Yes.
Just to clarify, I just want to piggyback what you said for the audience to, prior to you being here, this was, this project came in front of us a long time ago, seven years ago. And it got halted, and that stopped the no-annexation piece. And it held on for a while, but watching what's going on, to your point, what's going on in the county, and what's going on down on 561A, down Lockhouse Road and stuff like that, there is a concern that I had, that I brought up when I went back to Matt, said, can you, can we, can we, can you dust off this project? Because I would rather, I feel it's in Mineola's best interest to be able to control what's on the site compared to handing it over to the county.
Well, that's exactly what my point, correct.
So what you're saying is something that I've watched over the last seven years. And I'm just saying what you're seeing, because I know you're even here five-plus years or whatever, and the council. But yeah, this is what we've, that's the trend I'm seeing, and that's why it was kind of initiated, like, at least we have control over it here.
Absolutely, and I think that's an important component, that, you know, us as council, we're not only here to make decisions that's going to affect us in the next six months to a year, but of course, we're here to safeguard this for the next five, ten, twenty-plus years. And I guarantee in the next five, ten, twenty years, if, if this project would have never come to us, that would have changed whether this property was sold or not.
But going back to the other end of Scrub Jay, the other end of Sullivan Road, if I may, we did have a project come in front of this council, which was made by the Ladd brothers. And they were, they were proposing one acre, quarter-acre lots there, nice quarter-acre lots. A lot of people from Sullivan Road came out and said, we don't want this, and so council said, okay. And we didn't approve it, and now they got apartments. And so again, you're kind of scared to know what's going to happen in the future as council zeros off.
Correct.
Or if command, kind of commission changes.
Sure.
But basically now, we can kind of set the footprint of what we want to be.
And to your point, we're seeing this happen all over the county. I think there are, there are two large farms that have just been sold, that now they're putting in either... Correct, correct, Long Scott, and I think they're looking to do mixed units, apartments, and live locals. So, you know, this is something where we need to really keep an eye on. And I believe having those constraints, if we annex, would that be a, for the residents right here, they're concerned about that. Would that be, would you see that as losing the battle? Absolutely, but it's not losing the war. And that's something you have to keep in mind, is what's going to happen to your land, what's going to happen to your area five, ten, twenty years with an entity that us as a city have no say what could happen. So I want you guys to keep that in mind, as I've seen that play out for the negative down in South Florida, for, for areas that have not been annexed by cities, and the county has, has kept that in control.
So what'd I say? Is there anything else? We're going to open it for people from, for the residents?
Public comment?
Public comment, please. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, just like...
Did you, did you wish to hear from the applicant their presentation first before public?
I think we covered it. Well, let, let, let's listen to them, and then we'll figure out what you have.
Sorry.
So, it's, go ahead, public comment.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brian Sheehan. I'm actually a property owner in Mineola, but I also own a property that's right at that bottom left-hand corner. That's my property to the south. I've been a resident here since 2006. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, former planning director for the county. So I'm very familiar with this area. I agree with your statements, Councilman Hernandez. I think annexing the property is the best way to control it. But listening to the presentation of your staff and the presentation of the applicant, this is clearly premature. There are a lot of unanswered questions that need to be vetted and discussed with your staff prior to it coming to you, instead of sending it up to state with these open-ended questions. I'm really concerned about those unanswered questions. Oh, we'll work it out, you know, come back, and it concerns me that we're getting information last night at the planning commission. I mean, that's, that's not timely. We wouldn't accept that in our businesses. We wouldn't accept that in our personal lives. Why are you accepting that? So that's, that's a big thing I heard that concerns me. The lack of connectivity with Founders Ridge, I understand. You know, that's, you know, that's something may not concern all of you. But as a planner, that is key to our communities. Those interconnectivities are really, really important. I look at some of the newer developments, right next to schools. These school kids have to walk a half-mile down their development to come out of their development, to walk a half-mile back to the school, because it just wasn't thought about ahead of time. I mean, that's just planning 101. That is a site plan kind of issue. But these are the kind of things that pop up when you don't vet it in the beginning. Leaving an enclave, you know, this little enclave up there by the turnpike, you know, we're not really concerned about that. That's not part of the development. That's a super-big headache fifteen years from now. You know, the guy comes in, he wants to do something to this property, he can't get to it, it doesn't fit. It's right up against the turnpike. You know, that needs to be vetted out. The applicant should approach that property owner and at least come back with some answers for you on that one.
If I may, I just wanted to clarify, so I'm, we're talking about the same, so you're talking that, you're talking about the piece of property...
Right above the blue.
Where the arrow, the blue arrow is at the top of, okay.
Right. It's just, you can't, and I, I can point to specific examples. The villages has a couple of these, where they just went around it like an amoeba, and now they got this doughnut. Well, what do you do with that? You know, it's, it's just a headache. That should be vetted now while you're developing and planning for that area. There's really been inadequate consideration of the agricultural states to the, estates to the south. I know most of you are familiar with this area. Founders Ridge is going in, and then you have all these agricultural states. Well, that doesn't sound like a problem unless you've actually lived there. But we've got goats and pigs and chickens and people with high-powered firearms that are shooting all the time. I mean, you can't build houses right up against it. I mean, you can, and we have, but that will be a headache for you when those property owners start coming in going, hey, they're shooting my shotgun at, at six o'clock in the morning next to my house. You know, how do I know they're not shooting in my back window? Sometimes they will be. You know, so that's just something to consider, buffers, you know, walls, those kinds of things, berms, those kind of things. Anytime you're next to an agricultural property, and I don't see any of those property owners subdividing anytime soon, that's something to consider. Transportation, there were way too many unknowns with the transportation plan. The county gave you comments yesterday. I understand your staff didn't have time to review them. But that alone, to me, as a professional planner, should enable you to say, it's not timely, guys. Go back, work it out with our staff, and then come back with some answers for us. The last couple are, are more policy-oriented. The governor has a lot of, a lot of power behind him right now, and a lot of influence that he's going to be changing the, the homesteading taxation. I know as a, as a municipality, a lot of you look at houses as dollars. You know, they're going to be bringing in all these dollars. Well, if this thing passes next year, like the governor thinks it will, that's going to be leaving the city holding a huge tax burden, because you won't have that income coming in from those homesteaded properties if it passes. But that's a big unknown, so it's really, if I was sitting in your seat, I'd be truly worried about that issue, wondering how the city is going to pay for services and infrastructure when the developer is gone five years from now. You know, that's not going to be their problem, it's going to be yours. Same thing with the educational vouchers. They're creating huge headaches this year. We got, we got massive changes in school populations because of the vouchers and the way they're being distributed. I, I know that's not a, a city problem, it's a school board problem, but as leaders and parents, that's something we need to worry about. We need to see how that's going to fall out. So plopping down fifteen hundred houses with three thousand children, I, I, I'm a little concerned about that as a parent, how we're going to handle that. And... And I apologize. But just lastly, this whole rush that you have to transmit this comp plan amendment, it's not there, it's not true. You can annex this property with the utility agreement, control the property, like you, Councilman Hernandez said. But you don't have to send the comp plan amendment until later on, until some of these open-ended questions are answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wants to speak?
Matt Young, Ridgeland Communities, 555 Wunderley, for the record. Just to address the gentleman's comments, I think, number one, we're not creating an enclave. I think the property that was in question is already part of the Florida Turnpike there to the north. That was part of the eminent domain that occurred, associated with our property to the north in Mineola Ridge. So that is basically a turnpike right-of-way at this point. So we're not going to create an enclave there. You know, connections in between, we certainly agree. Whenever Founders Ridge came forward, and Mayor Kelly, I meant to address this earlier, so I apologize. Whenever Founders came forward, we recognized that they had quite a few points of interconnectivity. Their, their team reached out to me directly. I said, hey, look, we're happy to interconnect with you guys. But candidly, I don't know that I a hundred percent buy your site plan from an engineering point of view. I don't know that it's actually feasible. And furthermore, you know, we're at the comp plan and zoning stage. We're not at final engineering either. So we need a little bit of flexibility in that. I think your suggestion was great, you know, saying a minimum of two, up to six. We know the property owners to the south very well. We work well with them. And, you know, this is by no means a half-mile walk. You're probably at most, you know, five hundred to six hundred feet in between arrows, including Scrub Jay. So the, the, the expanse of land isn't as dramatic as it may seem, which is again, why I brought up the question of why do we need six points of interconnectivity in that small span? So again, we're just trying to lay the groundwork along, along with the city, making sure we have the proper measures, and we're happy to include that language moving forward. When it comes to schools, just like your utilities and everything else in transportation, you guys have a concurrency management requirement within your code. We're going to have to either meet that, or we don't get to develop. So if we don't either, you know, secure those school board seats, or secure the transportation impact improvements that are needed to support this development, or the city, you know, utility capacity isn't there, we're not going to develop outside of our opportunity to, you know, do an interim package plan that we can maybe work out an agreement to bring online in the interim. And then again, a lot of these comments, we did review those comments from the county. Candidly, some of those are comments where the county's saying, well, now the city, it's, you get, you get done in Sullivan. I don't know how to respond to that. There, there's comments in there that are, that are, that I think are a little bit inter-jurisdictional, that can be worked out while we're receiving comments from the state at no harm. So I think you have my commitment and the commitment of my team to continue to work alongside you and work through those issues, and make sure that whenever we come back, whether or not we agree via a resolution, we'll at least have an answer for you. And I think that's the important part of this process.
If I may, and I'm asking questions, and I know you weren't here, but hopefully you know. I remember the original site plan first, for this. It was pretty gifting with the setbacks when it adhered to the residents on Sullivan Road. Are those still going to be intact for this project?
Yeah, so the west side of the project, our very west boundary on that southerly leg is entirely stormwater retention.
Okay.
So you're going to have a good buffer there with stormwater retention, then you still have a rear yard setback before you ever get to a house. So you're probably exceeding what the original plan was at this stage.
Okay.
And then obviously, south, you know, Founders is what it is now. You know, maybe one day they'll develop Winter Park there, but, you know... Otherwise, we're matching city standard on buffers.
So a couple of other questions. When we had, the other one had walls. Are you still helping to do some type of wall, walls on Sullivan Road? Or is that more of a site plan question?
That is more of a site plan question, as far as we're concerned.
I just know, we, we went pretty far last time, and so I just remember what the visuals were, and you had some, you had some walls. To Joe's question, knowing the property and looking at it, you do have some pretty lofty requests for retention walls. requests for retention walls. It's those, but those retention walls are gonna be more towards the east side of Scrub Jay, is it not? Are, are there, is there a lot of those on the west side? I didn't, I didn't trespass on your property, I just know what I saw from the road, but I know the elevation of Founders gets kind of quirky also.
So this, this is obviously the whole area, right? And it's, it's, it's a good question to bring up at this stage, but at the same time, from an applicant's point of view, it's a little bit difficult to answer, because again, we're at the comp plan and zoning stage, we're not final engineering.
Right, I'm just, I'm just trying to get an idea of like, where, where...
No, I'll, I'll give you, I mean, 'cause we did the high-level exhibit, um, and, you know, we have, uh, some taller walls in the north. We have really all over, what we're committing to is six-foot along those public rightaways, uh, maximum height walls. But for instance, going north on Scrub Jay, right where that peel-out is there for the Turnpike property, um, we're actually cutting down, uh, so that won't be, um, a fill condition there, that'll be a cut-down condition there, because we're trying to get to an acceptable grade for your fire department throughout the community going to the north there, that's what we're working with.
So you just, it just puts a big retaining wall there?
But it'll be a cut-down.
Right.
So that's one example.
Which would be a great place for a big city logo to go, so the Turnpike could see it.
Well, the, yeah, the, I mean, yeah, we can talk about that, but...
Just putting it out there.
I don't, I don't, I don't know how the elevations will work.
I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, that is an option.
I just wanna make sure it's actually visible.
Exactly.
If it's colorful, it'll be visible.
Okay, okay, so that, that's where it is. And so when you say not visible, you're meaning from the homeowner that lives there is not gonna see this huge wall, they'll see...
No, no, I mean, I mean, the public driving the Sullivan and Scrub Jay will not see those walls. But there will be taller walls interior to the community. That, that will be installed prior to these peop, folks, whoever they are, the future residents buying their lots, so they'll be well aware of it.
Okay, um, the complexity, and I know you built, you did Hancock, and the, I guess it was polluted, they had to do the retaining walls on Hancock?
Yes, sir.
Um, to Joe's point of the walls, you can't do walls like that here, or is it just base consent? What is the difficulty? I mean, that, at the end of the day, that's a huge wall. I mean, you've got some big walls going on over there.
Right, yeah, so what you're dealing with is just a little bit tighter constraints, especially right up against the Turnpike and, and their property boundary. And then again, where we match with Founders, you wanna be able to make those great transitions as, as quick as possible for pedestrian access and the like, so, um, that's why in those instances, we're trying to utilize the same standards that have been adopted elsewhere, which is eighteen max interior, and anything adjacent to a public right-of-way is six-foot max.
Joe, do you have any questions, more questions? I know you're, you're big on the retaining walls.
We had a discussion with, um, I guess you'd call it Founders Ridge, we're calling it Founders Ridge, it's really not what it's gonna be called.
I forgot what it's gonna be.
They have, they have to develop Scrub Jay.
Yes, sir.
And, and that's gonna go through your property as well.
Yes, sir.
And they're gonna put up streetlights.
Yes, sir.
We have given up on streetlights a couple of times and got finagled out of it. Education Ave is a good example. That was supposed to have streetlights, and now it doesn't. And, uh, that's not gonna be a give-up again, on my part. The boulevards that people walk on need streetlights.
I agree.
Education Ave needs them badly, in my opinion, but fortunately, people don't walk a lot along Education Ave. When that time comes, the, the streetlights will need to go in, and the city's gonna have to put them in. We don't like doing things ourselves, we like developers to do them for us, so...
I don't blame you.
Just a point of interest.
Sorry, hey Matt, if you don't mind, if, um, you state your name and sign in for the audience.
He stated his name.
Oh, sure, yeah. Uh, just again, Matt Young, Ridgeland Communities, 555 Wenderly Place, Maitland, uh, Florida, and I'll sign in as well.
Are you saying, are you saying you'd like to see streetlights on the Scrub Jay piece, Scrub Jay that they're doing?
I think it's required, yes.
Yeah, and we're, we're happy to acquiesce to that, we fully agree with that. And, and again, having, having the trail, the interconnectivity on that street, I mean, that's what we're doing all the way up through Mineola Ridge, so, um, and we were happy to commit to being dark sky compliant, uh, no issues there. Actually, one of the, uh, things that we're implementing up on North Hancock, I think you guys might have already seen it, is now we're utilizing the new Duke Solar, uh, dark sky compliant streetlights. So, um, again, just trying to utilize that new innovative technology and, and incorporate that into the public safety realm.
Okay. Is there anything else here?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Flynn, is there?
At this time. Thank you.
Scott, have you even taken all the notes?
Excuse me?
Got all the notes taken care of?
I have taken a lot of notes, yes.
I'm just saying to make sure that they're... And so tonight, there's no action on the first one? On item, on seven, um, a request to transmit, which is not a final, it's just to transmit to see if there's any questions that they have. And nothing done on the developer's agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
The alternative you would have, uh, not to give you too many choices, but if you wish to continue the transmittal hearing till our next meeting on the sixteenth in conjunction with the others, till we can at least review the county, um, questions further, that I don't think there'd be any objections to that.
Yes, yes.
You've done that in the past, you've often...
I'm, exactly, do you have... Do you have any issue with...
I don't think two weeks are gonna kill ya, but, uh, that, if the applicant's okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, we have, um, I believe, as your counsel alluded to, sixty days, basically as, as a buffer, uh, two weeks in that. I don't under, necessarily know what the gain is gonna be. Uh, we're already working through those with the city and the county, I mean, at the end of the day...
I'm not really sure what it buys us.
We're, we're still gonna get the same comments back from the state, the state isn't gonna go, did you satisfy all county comments?
Yeah.
So...
I'm fine with transmitting now.
It's fine, I just know that you've, you've done that before, but in some situation.
We can, we can transmit.
I have no objection if you wish to transmit.
We can transmit, right, yeah.
I'm sorry, I may be out of line, but I, I wasn't sure we had all the comments from the, from the residents. Did we have an opportunity, or is that already asked?
We, you're welcome to speak, if you'd like. We were kinda closed, but you're welcome to speak.
Okay, yeah, I think we kinda went pretty quick to that closure, so, look, I, I really appreciate the, the time to be here. My name is Colin Sterling, 18131 Seminole Trail, I was here last night, caused a lot of uproar with the back and forth. You know, I, I love the idea of advertising our city, and, and having the developer put a big sign up is phenomenal. And I've, I've actually come up with a phenomenal saying for it. Welcome to Mineola, a sea of stucco and asphalt shingles. Because, because that's where we're headed. I'm directly west of, of where all this is planned. I've got gopher tortoises in my yard, I've got turkeys running around, we've seen bear, we've seen bobcat, okay? That's why we moved here. I looked at houses where I literally could stand between and touch both houses, and that's not why I moved to this area. That's what we're proposing here. It's a little bit of a scare tactic to say that if the county, if the county is gonna come in and approve the, the site plan, that the houses are gonna be tighter together. This, the county's not gonna bring utilities. This developer needs the city to provide the utilities. We don't have to settle for this plan. Okay? That's, that's just a fact. We, we don't owe them anything. We can stick to the way it is now and keep it rural and agricultural. We heard last night that it's just a cow pasture, the, the largest rectangle running north and south, just a cow pasture. I explained to everybody last night, no, there's like four cows that are there. There's a bathtub for water to, to keep them watered. That's not enough, that's not a cow pasture. That's what they did after they got the land to make it appear to be used as a cow pasture. They've actually gone out and bush-hogged the land to make it look more like a cow pasture. There's literally like four or five cows there, I think you've seen it if you've been there, okay? There, there are so many things. Dark sky compliant, what does that even mean? When I walked out of my house tonight, I literally looked up and saw stars. My kids' friends that live off of Grassy Lake come over to our house, and they're shocked that they can see stars from our house, because they're in one of these seas of stucco and asphalt shingles. And it's a terrible way to live for kids. The reason people don't walk down education is not because it's not lit, it's because it's a terrible venue. Why would you wanna walk through a sea of concrete and shingles and stucco? That's not it, that's not nature, that's not what people need, that's not what human beings need. They need nature. I've got fireflies in my yard. Have you ever seen the joy of a kid catch a firefly and put it in a jar and look at it, and have his own little mini lantern? That's not gonna exist anymore if this goes on. It will cease to exist. I understand that landowners have rights. We have rights too. We were here first. We bought what we bought because of the way the land was. We don't wanna live in a sea of shingles and stucco. Go ahead and annex it. Don't approve this heavy residential density. Do a one-for-five, five-acre lots, right? The, the recommendation last night was conservation land, not green space, not a retention pond, not retaining water, true conservation. We moved here from Massachusetts, I, I, I got it, it's completely different, you couldn't be any more different, Florida and Massachusetts, conservation land there meant it's conservation. You don't do anything with it. You leave it the way it is, you have trails, people bike, people hike, people walk, that's what people want in this area. Founders Ridge, we heard these glorious plans of a, of a amphitheater, a corporate sponsor, we're gonna see fireworks over the lake, Shepherd, or, uh, Grassy Lake, just a bunch of nonsense, that's not reality. The reality is, people are here 'cause they wanna be in nature. The developers don't care, the landowners don't care, they're not gonna have to live in it. They're gonna go back to their place where they live, where they wanna be, and it's the way they want it to be. No one's developing next door to them and causing things like this that they don't want. We are the residents, we are the people that live here. This is not what we want. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Oh, I forgot to talk about the wastewater. Three to four X times the processing, I told you where I live, I smell the processing now. It stinks so bad. Don't be scared, wanna live next to that.
Excuse me, sir, if you're gonna speak, we, we, we just have to keep it on the record. I appreciate your comments, and you're welcome to have at the floor and voice them, but it just needs to be for the record. Okay, no worries. Yes, sir?
Uh, yes, I'm Jeffrey Borey, I'm at, uh, 18349 Seminole Trail. I am, um, just adjacent from the, the blue marking there on the map. The, I'm gonna also, uh, second a lot of what was just said. You, you guys are mentioning the light, you know, that you're wanting and requesting for Scrub Jay. Uh, I don't want the light pollution, um, you know, like, like was just mentioned, we live out in a rural area, and I like it that way. I bought it out there. I was, I just built my home a year ago there, and I was held to a one-per-five, and that's what I had to build on. And I'm fine with that. And like he also just mentioned, if you wanted to annex it, I'm not opposed to that either. But again, let it be one-per-five or something not so tight. The biggest factor here would be property value. Can you promise me that my property value is not gonna plummet if this is, if we get duplexes put in down the street from me? I mean, nobody, you can't promise me that, nobody can promise me that. I mean, I, I, you know, bought this property, oh, I bought it seven, oh, oh, probably eight years ago, with the hopes of dr, uh, building my dream home, which I haven't now, I built it there. And, um, you know, I, I didn't build it with, with the intention of this coming in, you know, as my neighbor. The, and, and also, mentioned, you know, the, the roundabouts, I'm gonna touch on that subject, I hate roundabouts. Uh, roundabouts are horrible. They, I know they're traffic control, but yeah, that's traffic control for people that don't live there. We live on these roads. We are gonna have to constantly deal with these roundabouts. Developers aren't dealing with them, they're not driving through them daily, we will be. Um, the, the infrastructure, I'm, you guys, it's been brought up, a lot of these points have been brought up that I'm gonna bring up as well. Uh, you all know it's not sufficient. It, it's, you know, in that area, uh, my nephew was in accident there on Scrub Jay and, uh, Citrus Grove, because you can't see around that corner when people are flying down the S-curves. I know it's in the plans to be developed, but I think those are things that need to be brought up and done before, and, and see the results of that before we move into something The, uh, and, and also, again, true conservation should be left alone. Uh, yeah, we have wildlife all around us, there's gopher turtles, I mean, weekly, I see a gopher turtle coming across and, you know, doing its thing, what it does. You can't tell me that all of those gopher turtles are gonna be, you know, replaced, or you're gonna find a home for all of them. I mean, and I kid you not, weekly, there's a gopher turtle that we see on our road or coming into our property. So the other, my big concern would be stormwater. So we have a lot of stormwater that comes from Seminole Trail down, which is, you know, down to the lake, obviously, we're, you know, it's a hill. If you develop that property, all you're gonna do is push more and more stormwater towards that lake, towards us. If you don't control that or figure a way to divert it, it's gonna be a problem for us residents along that side. The, another thing would be a, uh, on my list is a, a wall, um, if things were to go through, you know, not that I'm hoping they will, but, uh, I, I know it was brought up, but I, I think that, you know, some diversion between us, I, I say wall, I'm thinking more of a landscape barrier between us and something I don't wanna see. I think that should be something that, uh, should have to be, um, put in the plans. And, and my time's up, but that's pretty much all I got, so thank you.
Phil, if you have something else to say, feel free to say it.
Uh, they're, they're, they're mostly, they've been brought up, so I, um, I don't, I don't wanna keep repeating things, so...
That's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Jeff Dierdorf, I live on 18015 Victorian Drive, and just to make sure all the, the smell is on record, it does really smell on that, so I just think that's something to think about for future development, where people buying that house that they don't know about, they buy it, it stinks, it might set them off. The other thing, in the last six months since development started, uh, south of us with the apartments, we've had two panthers caught on my trail cams in my yard, probably sixty turkeys, probably twenty coyotes, and gopher turtles, all the time. And that's just something I wanna bring up. I just think it's important to think about. I know, I've lived here for forty years, I've traveled to a country in the world, I love this place, I think it's fantastic, I think it's beautiful, I understand development, I understand growth, but at some point, we just gotta slow it down and let things happen naturally and organically, so we get what we all moved here for. Why this place is blowing up and doing well is because of its beauty, not because of stucco and houses and roofies and things that we don't wanna look at. It was here because it's beautiful, and the rolling hills. Let's keep it, please, that's all I gotta say. That's it, okay, guys? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Even though you're stating your name for the record, please make sure everybody's signing in if you hadn't already in the back.
Yes, my first time, I'll...
Okay, thank you.
So Juan Camacho, uh, 753 Rioja Drive, I live just beyond, well, actually right beyond Sullivan Road, where it's now Vino Road, across the street from, uh, 27. So I'm not particularly within the living area... So I'm not particularly within the living area, however I am adjacent to it, so what's going to be impacted there is going to impact me. I only have two comments. I've been looking at the logo for the city of Mineola for this particular meeting, and I say that because I see that and it seems to me that we're, and I understand we're trying to transmit this to the state, I know that's the next step. But ultimately, we're going to have to make a final decision as a city and as a city council on whether or not we're going to preserve what's on that logo or destroy it. So the closer that we get to more development happening within the city, the less of that image we're going to be able to portray to the public. And another thing too, as far as conservation is concerned, because that was harped at the last night's P&amp;Z meeting, there won't be anything left to conserve by the time we have all this development that's being proposed. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My apologies, I just wanted to make sure it's on the record. Colin Sterling, 1-8131 Seminole Trail. Love what the gentleman just said. Speaking of the wastewater treatment, I know there was some discussion last night and some misunderstanding about what we're talking about, but that wastewater treatment that's there now is going to have to increase three to four times to support all this growth. The amount of wastewater that's being processed, three to four times, okay? I do, I smell it from my house. The first time I smelled it, you know what I thought? I thought I had a leak in my septic tank. That's how bad it was. It smelled like raw sewage. Okay? And I don't care, if you put that on a list for home buyers, hey, by the way, we're going to be treating this wastewater and you might smell it, that's not the right approach. It's just not, I'm sorry. Oh, shoot.
You left off that wastewater needs to be three to four times.
Yeah, three to four times, because the smell's going to increase, right? I mean, it's just going to, I had another point that I wanted to make. Gopher tortoises, traffic, oh, conservation, that was it. The recommendation last night from P&amp;Z was twenty-five percent of the project, conservation. Conservation doesn't mean a green space for retention pond, that's not conservation. That's just taking care of the bare minimum so that all that wastewater doesn't run off stormwater, doesn't run off into the lake and pollute, okay? That's not what that, the recommendation was, conservation land, done up like they do up in New England northeast. You don't touch it, you block it off. It is, it is the way it is so that it can host the gopher tortoises. We heard last night, that's the only place, the only place in the area of Mineola that has the right condition, I don't remember what the term was, esric. Talked to the lady that was sitting right here, I don't know who it was. It's an esric environment. It's the only one in Mineola. If we do this, it's gone. It won't exist. Welcome to Mineola, a sea of stucco and asphalt shingles. It's not the legacy I want to have, and I don't think you do either. Thank you.
Anybody else? Does somebody want to make a motion? Sure. Sorry, I didn't see you.
Kristen Sterling, I'm at 1-8131 Seminole Trail, right adjacent to this plan. And I just think, you know, things are zoned in the way that they're zoned originally for a reason, that there's a plan. And then, you know, developers keep coming in all around us and we've seen it time after time after time. They say, we want to rezone. Okay, sure. So what was, I mean, so what was the plan is just constantly being just revised and there is apparently no plan, is what it kind of looks like, when you're just watching it happen all around you. And so I think, you know, the plan to keep it rural, I mean, and maybe develop it as rural and let people live on five acres, people want that. We have so many people come to our property and they say, I didn't even know this existed in this area. I've been looking for something like this, I can't find it. I mean, people want that. And so why can't we just keep it like it is and keep it rural, agricultural, and not cram as many bodies into this area as we can and kick out all of the residents who can't speak for themselves, which we've already mentioned, so many different species of animals. It's a, it's just a haven for biodiversity where we are right now. And if you go and sit for a couple of hours, you'll see so many species, so many different, I mean, falcons, eagles, I mean, just the birds are, you can't even, can't even list them all in this amount of time. Tortoises, of course, we've mentioned them. And in their burrows, there could be up to thirty-three species sharing those burrows. And thirteen of those that are in this area are endangered. And how can you possibly rehome that many animals? You just can't. They're just going to be driven out at best, murdered at worst. And so because they can't speak for themselves, I wanted to come up here and say something for them. And can we just keep it as simple as possible and keep the beauty and the simplicity and the reason why so many people have moved away from Orlando out to Mineola? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone? Please make sure you sign in before you go. If you spoke and didn't sign in, there should be a sheet on the back. Does somebody want to make a motion to transmit the comp plan?
So moved.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries to transmit. Is that it for that part of our segment?
Yes, the only other thing is to announce that the date of the next, the second public hearing on this matter is in two weeks on December 16th, same place at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that you were going to address the warding of the public property, the utility property, so make it a little bit more flexible.
Yes. One of my notes.
Okay, in the up to six connectivity, so, okay. Is that it? Okay, item number ten. City council appointments, this is when, every year we go back and we would, can, unless we're requested, that we readdress appointments at this time?
If I can just make a note that in the Planning and Zoning Commission, appointments or reappointments, that we changed Joanna O'Hilarion to Mendy Bacon and Denise Calderon to Nicole Marie, for the reason of Joanna and Denise are both already on planning and zoning. And these two are your alternates. Correct?
Yep.
I'm sorry? The way I was reading this was that this was, these are your alternates, not...
No.
That's why I was...
I think this was just, this was just to renew their term of the existing, that's what those are on there.
Is it a term thing? Okay, so this is considered a...
They serve what, three-year terms, is that it? I assume the names on here are at the end of their term, that's why they were on there? I wondered that myself.
They were fulfilling the previous...
Oh, okay, they filled out a term, so they're at the end of a three-year term.
Can we please address P&amp;Z at the next, once we get some clarification of P&amp;Z?
Please, because if it is alternate appointments, then the alternates would be Mendy and Nicole. Right, but it would then be in here as alternates. Right? Okay, well, yeah, well, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds like housekeeping.
I appreciate it. That was the only thing that I saw.
Yeah, I think with a lot of stuff happening the next year, we have a lot of big-ticket items, leaving things as is, I think is the best route, in my opinion.
So just, can you clarify your statement? Just everything as, everything from the vice mayor to the P&amp;Z?
Correct, yes, the P&amp;Z, everything stays as is.
Yes, everything stays the same.
I thought we were going to alternate. I thought when you said councilman, we would alternate it every couple of years?
I think we would, if it's the council's decision, but I think given the big items we have coming up, I think it's best to not distract ourselves with this. It's my thought, my opinion. What are your thoughts, Debbie?
My thoughts are, we rotate it. I mean, even, I have thoughts on the planning and zoning liaison as well. I contacted three cities, our three sister cities, and this is just my thoughts, my opinion, that a planning and zoning council liaison is not needed. I think it gives a distraction to the P&amp;Z board when a council member's there. I don't feel that they're free to talk and express themselves, and I think it just, it distracts them.
But I think, in my opinion on the liaison, the liaison is to sit as a coach and watch how the P&amp;Z actions, and then when they see them stumble after the meeting, to go back and explain to them, well, this is what, this is what, this is, there's the coach. And so I think the P&amp;Z team is a reflection of the liaison. And so when somebody are stumbling, if somebody quotes or somebody makes a comment, I remember, I watched the films and somebody made the comment where they asked the attorney if they needed to get sworn in. So that would be a time for the liaison to coach them up. These are new people, new to the process, and they need to, so the liaison is very important to understand how they work. When they need coaching, that liaison talks to the P&amp;Z and says, hey, you don't have to swear in, the city attorney doesn't have to get sworn in.
It's someone to go to.
That is the liaison for that person to coach in.
It was my understanding, it was the city attorney that chipped in there and helped him out, but I could be wrong, I mean, Scott, you can correct me.
This is my, that's my opinion of what it was, because, you know, there's relationships outside of here that gives you opportunities to mentor the P&amp;Z. So the staff, that person is more of a mentor to P&amp;Z as an advisor, and that's the way I look at it, the way it's always been. When I was on P&amp;Z, we were being mentored by the...
Yeah, the liaison is rather unique to Mineola, it's not something you see in most cities. The, it is provided for that you can, you don't have to have a liaison and it's up to you. It's easy to go the pros and cons, I think what Debbie's mentioned is sometimes there's a concern that having a council member there can have a chilling effect on them to speak freely. On the other hand, as you mentioned, the, it's traditionally been a communication thing as well, that you having a council member there that's actually seeing there in the fray, if you will, then can come forward when it comes to council and say, this is what was discussed at the P&amp;Z meeting. And as you say, a coach, if you will, and can bring some procedure.
I think our P&amp;Z, watching them, it's painful. And I think this is the time for that liaison is more important now than ever before. That's because they need help. They don't understand the process, they don't understand the timing. I think last night, you know, some discussions went down, that the printing out, seven hundred pages to read, I don't think they understand the reason of that, we can't do this, we want, they don't understand the timeline of when it takes to get the documents, like if, they have sixty days, once this is submitted, do this, and to push everything back. And that's your time as the liaison to coach them, to explain to them, to explain to them if they have questions or concerns.
I've always addressed them, outside of the council meeting.
Have you ever invited them to a Thursday meeting and said, or maybe you can go to the Thursday meeting?
Typically, we'll do public comments, I don't even think that's, this is an item that has public comments.
Okay, yeah, I was just going to say...
We do have, sorry to interrupt, but we do have a section after this that is public comments for the audience.
Okay, I just want to make a comment relative to that, because I was here and heard the discussion.
So that's fine.
So, yeah, I think there's a point here that I think, listening to what I heard last night and the coaching that they need, I think the liaison needs to come to the Thursday meetings, the pre-meetings before the planning, to make sure that everything's in line for her team.
Okay, well, this is the first time I'm hearing this, and it was my understanding that the liaison is to inform the board, you know, what's happening as far as within the city and the council.
The liaison is whatever council decides the liaison is.
And how far you want to be involved with it. I mean, I know I've had a P&amp;Z member over the Thanksgiving weekend, a long weekend that has reached out to me, and my lines are always open. Anyone and everyone can call me and I'll give them my opinion, and I'll let them know straight out how things are when it comes to a council person. But absolutely, I mean, I've grown great relationships, friendships with P&amp;Z when I was on P&amp;Z liaison because of being so active with them.
I think, I think, I think the newness of the P&amp;Z being green, and they're all fairly, they're fairly new, I think it's more critical now than ever to have a liaison from council to be that mentor and to be that coach for them.
Okay, but just so it's clear transparency, I've always understood that we are not to interfere, the liaison, to make or intimidate their decision.
And you're totally right on that.
Yes, that's...
But to sit, and I, to sit, for, not to sit here, I didn't mean that, it's not for, to be discussing item A and you say...
Right, right.
I don't really like that, I think they need to have walls. That's, you can't, that is not it. But for you to take notes and then after that, have the relationships, I know Pam had with her team when she was the liaison, to pick up the phone and say, hey, you know, if you need some more time, there's a Thursday meeting, the LDRs, you can come to those, you can come to that, or, hey, our city attorney doesn't really need to get logged in, or give them coaching.
I have done that.
So I'm just saying, so that's what the liaison does. And you see that firsthand experience, the city attorney is not going to tell her to coach us, that you as the mentor, and that's the purpose of what I feel the liaison is, so that's where I am, so I don't really feel comfortable with...
Yeah, I've always stayed quiet in the meetings, I don't want to intimidate.
Are you saying you don't want to be the liaison anymore?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that I think it should rotate. It doesn't mean I don't want to do that anymore, it just, I'm thinking all of these positions need to rotate, whether from vice mayor down.
Okay. So...
It gives, and you know, vice mayor is a title, there's no extra pay, there's no extra vote, there's, the whole purpose of vice mayor is to run the meeting when the mayor can't be here.
Okay, except, and I'm just going to have to interact on this one.
And there's probably other things too.
Except this year, because I will not be doing, I will not be finishing the year off, so whoever we choose as the vice mayor will become the mayor. And I'm putting that out in full transparency. So it is very critical that the mayor becomes flexible. So I have concerns with knowing people's schedules and where they can make it and not make it. We had a council member here this year that showed up to no budget hearings, like, and I wouldn't want that person to be the mayor, because you didn't come to any budget meetings this year. So there's pieces that you have, or I can't go to this meeting, I get the calls where I have to meet with this council member only after four o'clock or after five o'clock. The mayor needs to be flexible during the day to be able to pick up a phone, call on a dime, be able to have the advantage to get in and out. You know, I think Joe, as vice mayor, could reach out to do that, I know Pam has flexibility within that. Do you have flexibility to like just leave a job? Like, I can just, I've got to go leave right now and take care of the city?
I think councilman...
For the record, I don't want vice mayor, I just want to put that out there.
I was like, you have some flexibility.
I know out of respect for you, I know that you, I know that your job is very...
Just want to put that out there.
I just want to say, so, I'm just saying, so it's got to be a commitment. And knowing that things that we found out today, the vice mayor will be having to deal with possible pending lawsuits. So they're going to have to be able to leave and deal with things during the day. And I know you have not been able to make certain meetings because you don't have the flexibility of your job, so...
I do now.
For, I'm thinking with that with Pam and with Joe.
Well, I do now have the flexibility. I'm in a different position at my job. I've always been committed to this city for thirty-two years. I've always been committed to this city for thirty-two years and I'm not going to change that dedication and commitment to the city.
Can I ask commitment? You missed two budget meetings this year and one of them was for a social event, my understanding. I thought it was for Todd Howard's fundraiser.
No, I, I did not go to a fundraiser.
Okay, well, that's what I'm hearing, but you missed two budget hearings.
Well, you need to ask me because that's not, that's not what I did.
But I, I'm not saying you did that. So if you didn't do that, but you still missed two budget hearings.
I don't know what those dates were. I might have been on vacation, but I always announce my vacation ahead of time.
Okay. So.
Well, Joe, Joe, do you want to be vice mayor?
So, so I think.
Why don't Pam and I switch and do?
Because I don't want to be planning and zoning. I would like to continue where I'm at.
You did, you did vice, you did vice mayor for two years.
And she did it for ten, now twelve.
But you did it for, you did it for, you did it forever. And then you came back and said, we need to start switching. And so you switched for two. And now Pam should do for two and then in two more years, she can talk, we can figure out. And maybe she'll switch in two years, but it seems like it's two-year rotations.
When, when did you become vice mayor? When did she become vice mayor?
Originally, I'm not sure. We have to go back and look.
She's just been this year. This is her first year. She's been back.
Is it the first year?
Yeah.
So then next year, do you want to rotate it?
I'm not here next year. That will be, that will be a new council, a new mayor to decide. All I know is I have to feel comfortable with. I have to look at where I'm gonna leave this city in, position in when I step away. It might be vice mayor for three weeks until a special election or it could be for six months. But whatever it is, that person is, has to be committed. And I, I don't know things. I just know that I'm concerned about the commitment that you've had because I remember distinctly at a social event that was held at, by the chamber. It was the same night as the meeting and you couldn't come because you were at the social event. I did and then I came here to be here at a meeting and you did not leave in time.
I would have to research that.
I, I'm just saying.
It wasn't at a fundraiser. It's, I wasn't.
We're not even talking about the fundraiser. We're talking about, this was a chamber. It was either dining. You were judging possibly at a meeting. It was one of the chamber events and you couldn't come here because the chamber events was more, more important. I went to the chamber event and I left early just because we had to have a quorum because I think Pam might have been on vacation. And so I need somebody that's the commitment and I, in the last.
We both have full-time jobs, so.
She's, I, I, I think.
And Dave will, I'm sure he'll let her off and I have that flexibility too.
But I, I feel comfortable knowing that flexibility is existing, so I'm gonna have.
Well, it's up to the council.
But I have to, I will have.
Either way, I'm still committed to the city and dedicated to the city.
I just have to, I support Eric's comment of just leaving things the same.
That's fine.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, do you want to make something in my commotion just to leave everything status quo?
So moved?
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of that? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Final public comment. Yes, sir. That's fine. I watched you on TV last night too, so.
Colin Sterling, chief, um, oh, I was on TV?
Oh, yeah, the whole thing's.
I didn't wear my makeup.
Huh?
Good evening, camera.
It's there.
Colin Sterling, one eight one three one Seminole Trail Chief Troublemaker. The way, the way I heard the conversation last night from my perspective about the six hundred eighty-nine pages, the problem wasn't so much we need to have them printed out. The problem was the application was made less than seven days in advance of last night's P and Z meeting over a holiday weekend. That was the problem. The poor committee did not have enough time to really digest that, internalize it and make a informed decision from my perspective. The, the point about printing came up because the, the young lady was having trouble with the technology, downloading it because the file was so large. And so the comment was made, hey, if there were a printed copy, I would have actually been able to digest it more easily because I could actually get my hands on it. I agree. Printing seven hundred pages is ridiculous. What is not ridiculous is asking somebody for making an application this large and this impactful to give all of us a little more courtesy than seven days of advance to review seven hundred pages.
Understood.
Thank you.
It's the timing.
Agreed. Thank you.
Candy Alexander, eight seven two Meadow Park Drive. Um, Santa Claus and I were sitting back there.
I saw that.
Just want to encourage you to, um, as the discussion was unfolding, um, as a citizen, I don't know anything about P and Z, but I did watch on South Lake TV last night, um, the interactions. And I think sometimes everyone gets very comfortable in positions than they're, that they're in a lot. And because of that, as we were sitting back there and you guys were having your discussion even here, it seemed to be kind of the same dynamic. So I'm going to encourage you all, um, as always, watching other residents, watching you, to maybe just remember all eyes are on you, all of you and.
All the time.
All the time. And if they don't know what's really going on, it kind of sets a tone. So, um, Santa and I hope that you will continue to do all the great things that you do, do for us and you encourage your P and Z, especially new people, um, and get them the resources they need to make competent decisions and recommendations.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Candy.
Oh, I'm thinking of jokes. I'm thinking of jokes.
Nathan Foch, seven oh seven Blue Citrus.
Sorry, sir. What was that again?
Santa Claus, one North Pole Way. I don't know.
Is it, is it Santa or Saint Nicholas?
Nathan Foch, seven oh seven Blue Citrus. Um, I just want to share, as you guys know, I was on P and Z and stepped down.
Which was naughty.
I just, it was naughty. Thank you. I just want to give you some perspective, just from my point of view on it. I, I think if you have a liaison, they should be silent during the meeting, right? They should not interact during the meeting because then it is coercing, usurping, whatever word you want to use potentially. But I do think planning and zoning needs coaching, needs education. One of my big reasons I stepped down is, is because of the sunshine. You having trouble focusing on me, Joe? So you've got to teach citizens that are stepping up to volunteer at that point what the job is, what it entails. I've attended dozens and dozens and dozens of council in planning and zoning and it was hard for me to get up to speed. I got a, here's your seat, you're now on planning and zoning and it's a lot of work. It's a lot of stuff to learn. And right now Mineola does not provide any education. You get a seat, off you go. And we're seeing the problem right now because there is so few people experienced on P and Z. There's no one to show them. I can't show them when I'm sitting next to them because that's a sunshine violation, right? You know, they don't know why I'm talking to the person sitting next to me. There's, there's no opportunity for P and Z to teach the, excuse me, the new members. It's up to the city. I don't know if that's the liaison. Maybe that's the liaison. Maybe it's classes. You have to take classes from the city before you can apply to be on P and Z.
Yeah, I was gonna say Nathan, also in regards to that, we did, um, Scott and Jennifer and I were talking about, we're gonna do classes when there's a short planning and zoning agenda that where they're gonna stay afterwards and we're gonna go over the sunshine law, you know, how to make motions and kind of do a little education, probably about thirty minutes or so, but in each.
I think that's great, but it's unfortunately too late. They're already doing the city's business, sitting up there without that education and, and you're just setting them up for failure. You're setting them up for frustration. Um, and the last thing I'll say, I was, I was at event. I'm not here trying to, uh, do a bank's health frick. I was at an event this morning, so that's why, or this evening, so that's why I'm here as Santa.
This morning?
Yeah, I actually slept last, no. So thank you very much. I just wanted to share my perspective.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's very critical as people come through P and Z. What scares me the most is there's people on P and Z that are new. They don't understand the city and now they want to run the city and be the mayor. So that's my concern is the inexperience of people just saying they want to. That's my biggest concern about choosing a vice mayor is Pam has been here longer than everybody else. And so for me, it's my succession planning. Unfortunately, what I had for succession planning and my Christmas wish did not come true. No pun intended, but.
Did that so often? Does that work?
Good, good. Okay, thank you. But so now I have to look at the, the next one. So I am concerned of what, because I don't know what succession planning looks like now, but I've already committed to, to my, to my next journey.
Yep.
And so I have to make sure that it transitions and then what Scott will be talking about in a moment makes it even more critical for the succession planning of what the city's about to go through in the next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, please make sure there's no damage on the reindeer and the sled up on the roof, please.
Stay off the grass.
He looks so much better in that. Dave Jaeger, twenty-seven fifty Purple Mall Court. So I notify Mark every time the wastewater treatment plant smells. Um, I, I'm there daily. So I mean, there are good days and there are bad days, but I can tell what the difference is. But I, did I ever tell you that we need expansion room? I'm not sure if I did, but I, I just want to let you know that we might need some more property going east or something like that.
Do you have it or no a property?
Uh, no, I, I don't, but, but there's probably something over there that, you know, we need to, to look forward to. But, um, um, yeah, we, we definitely have an issue there. Um, but you know, who am I? You know, at the Orange County dump, they put six hundred thousand dollar houses right at the bottom of the hill and people bought them. I got nothing. I don't, and, but they do call the dump and say it smells today. Well, if you would see what goes in the dump, it should smell. But, um, we definitely need to look at that. There's a lot going on and, uh, um, the last thing we need to do is be behind the eight ball. But I do notify Mark and he is quite aware and, and he takes care of it. So we're going in the right direction, but, uh, there's a lot going to be going on and, uh, we might not be able to catch ourselves one day. Thank you.
Mark? I make a quick, uh, the Christmas parade is Saturday, December thirteenth. I will need a list of those that are going to attend. Just let us know. Um, we're gonna have the council be towards the front of the parade and we'll need them there no later than five thirty. So please let us know which, which of y'all will be able to attend and we'll plan accordingly. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be there.
Thank you. I'll be there.
Okay.
Joe?
What?
Anything for city manager?
No.
Scott?
Yeah, yes. Um, well, you've already mentioned this. I, maybe a little premature, but we, I was contacted yesterday from the attorney for the landowner for the property that had applied for the special exception for the gas station in front of Dell Web to, as a courtesy call, basically to let us know that they intend at this point to go forward with a proceeding under chapter seventy point five one of the Florida statutes, which is the Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution Act. Basically, it's a process to, it's not a adversarial process, so they're not suing us per se, but it is kind of a precursor to that. Essentially what it is, is they file a request. We reply and a special magistrate gets appointed. The fir- first phase of the process is they go through essentially a mediation process where they try to see if there's some version of what they're requesting that can be acceptable to the city and any residents and the applicant. If they can, that can be brought back to you for consideration. If they can't come up with a, um, solution, if mediation fails, they then go on to hear, to a hearing procedure in which the special magistrate will review the whole case. And this is somebody who has training in land use and, and the law. Typically, it's an attorney. They then hear the whole case and basically like a judge, if you will, will make a recommendation of what they think is appropriate and what should be done with the property. That recommendation then would come back to you as a council. You are not required to follow that, but it is a recommendation and obviously should be given some weight. But getting ahead of it a little bit, but just let you know that that's apparently the path that this is going to be going at this point. They have to file that request within a period of time so that probably, if not by the next meeting shortly thereafter, they'll file the request and then we'll go down that process. Obviously, we'll keep you informed of how that's going. Nothing you all need to do or we need to do at this, at this thing, but I wanted you, rather you hear it from me than hear it from social media or something, so.
Thank you.
So, um, I talked to and I'd asked the planning and zoning that for, prior to the last meeting, a written opinion of why they chose to turn down. I know you supported your vote because of the P and Z. You do want to support your board. I think we need a written opinion from the planning and zoning of why they said no as part of this. I'd requested that earlier. Cause I think it's gonna come in, that comes into play of why we voted no. But I think the quest was why did, how is P and Z again, looking at it being quasi-judicial, looking at the facts, why they voted no and what legal terms do they have by that? So that was something that I, I still, I requested and you said your staff would, you would work something up on the email. I just never got heard back from it. So if you can just put that in the hopper in case this goes to the next level that we're ahead of that game. I don't think the magistrate will be looking at their opinion, but if it gets sued, it's not. But, um, to understand, it's about to get real with us and with P and Z. They have submitted paperwork for Walmart for the site plant. It's coming. I think I talked to Joyce. It looks like the plans are there. They're, they were, they were coming in this week. So that's gonna happen. So this will be round one to see how this works and then the stakes are gonna get higher on Walmart. So we just need to make sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is because I don't think they're playing anymore. I think they're, this was a shot across the bow in our opinion. And I will not, unfortunately, I will not be here for any of the Walmart piece. So it's gonna rely very heavily on the vice mayor at that time. Even though if, even if, even if I am mayor, it would be the vice mayor. And I think that's what you're heading to is it's, there's a lot coming across the board. So it's gonna be heavy, so. But thank you. Anything for the attorney?
No, thank you, Scott.
Anything?
Yes, um, Scott, when you get back to the office tomorrow, maybe we could do a phone call with Jennifer and set up maybe a first-class education for the planning and zoning board.
No, and I know you've mentioned that before, so I'll, I will.
I appreciate it.
I'm, I'm all for if they need to not do it on, just do a separate meeting and.
We are.
And just have it, have it.
And I actually like what Nathan mentioned. They, they used to have, actually the League of Cities used to have a, a training program that I don't know what happened to it. It's not apparent, but I'll, we'll look into that some more. And, and if they don't do it or if we don't have, if they're in training available, we can certainly put together some.
Yes, so we'll navigate that.
You know, one thing that, and I'll, I'll say this, plan, remember, planning and zoning, these are volunteers. I mean, I, I think they've taken a lot of heat lately, but it's really the purpose of that is to get input from your residents and get their opinions. They just make recommendations. Ultimately, you all make the big bucks. You know, I say that facetiously, but, um, you know, you all make those decisions. It is good to have their input, but, um, remember. It is good to have their input, but remember, they are just a recommendation committee to get input from the community as to what they'd like to see with, with applications. So one of the things we've actually also talked about is, we have treated planning and zoning commission meetings as quasi-judicial proceedings, and it's probably not required. We may do away with, and we'll certainly talk to you about that, rather than have those, that they be more of an informal, community recommendation type of proceeding. In many ways, it vets out issues so that things can be caught before it gets to, and, and you probably don't see a lot of that. They do catch things, to their credit, that, that gets changed, so that by the time it gets to you, it's a better product. But anyway, but, long way to say yes, we'll, I'll get with you tomorrow about training, and, you know, we, it is, it isn't fair to put somebody in a position and, and not give them the training that they need to succeed.
It's critical before, Walmart's just now starting the process, so probably not coming in front of, till February or March. So we just need to make sure that, kind of when you do the training, if you don't mind, prioritize what is gonna be more important for that piece than...
Yeah, we'll put something together.
Okay, thank you very much for taking leadership on that. Nope. Thank you, Scott.
Yes, thank you, Scott.
Pam, anything?
No, thank you.
No?
I'm good.
Debbie, I do not know, I, I hear say why you did not make it to the meetings. If I was wrong, then I apologize. But I do know that you did not make it to two budget hearing meetings, and I do know that you were at a chamber event that I had to come back to, and you stayed at the event, that the prioritization, I was disappointed in you very heavily, 'cause your priority was the chamber and not your city. For the budget hearings, those were a month apart, they were two weeks, and then two weeks. I've never known you take vacation for four weeks, so I'm not sure why you missed one of the meetings. I knew the first meeting, I believe you were out, and then you just didn't make it to the second one. But I think everybody else here, it's kind of, even Eric has adjusted schedules and when he can, to make it to at least one of the budget hearings for the input, so that was my position, so. I'm just gonna clarify why I feel the way I do. I felt you deserved it, and I think I needed to say it on the record, you know, for, just for people to hear it and for council to hear it. So, just like the time I got feedback from you that I was distracting in a meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so thank you.
But I don't know those dates, so I can't confirm anything that you said, but...
Thank you. Um, with that said, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion?
Okay, can I get a, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.